We will start off tonight's council, today. Council meeting with prayer led by.
Michael.
Led by Councilmember Balls and the pledge will be led by Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. Bow your heads, please. In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful, our praise is due to God, the Lord of the worlds, the most compassionate, the most merciful, master of the day of judgment. We alone we worship and you alone we ask for help. Guide us on the straight path, the paths of those who have blessed and not of those who have incurred your wrath and has gone astray. And God, please look over our city, everybody that works for this city, especially for our citizens. And Lord, please bless those young kids who caused us harm in the city of Saginaw. All this we ask you to do in this night. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to Saginaw City Council. I want to do a little housekeeping first. All council persons, please put your phones on vibrate, also those tablets. Audience, if you would just go along with me and put your phones on silent as well. Madam Clerk.
Ready for roll call.
Oh wait, let me do this, I'm sorry. Roll call, then I'll do it, okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Protem Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Ostaches absent. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
You have eight members present, one absent.
Thank you. Housekeeping, finishing it up. This is a, this is the city council meeting, and I ask that everyone refrain from bluing, clapping, and any obnoxious behavior. We are still in session, so we will not be hollering, "Ooh," okay? So, council persons, please make sure your phones are on silent, because I need a new phone. And they got the new ones. So, Madam Clerk.
We have a couple announcements. The first is that city offices will be closed Friday, March 29th, in observance of Good Friday. And the yard waste pickup season will begin the week of April 1st, and collection will be on your regular trash day. We have one proclamation today, it's recognizing March 31st, 2024, as Cesar Chavez Day.
Mister councilperson Flores will be reading it. Can I get the representative to come up to the podium, please? Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. So, city of Saginaw proclamation, Cesar Chavez Day. Whereas Cesar E. Chavez, one of the most important Latino leaders in the U.S. history, was born on March 31st, 1927, in Yuma, Arizona, to Lebreo and Juana Chavez. And whereas young Caesar and his family moved to California following seasonal work after losing both their farm and store in 1937, as suppression intensified and years of drought forced thousands off their land. In 1944, Caesar joined the Navy at the age of 17 and served for two years. And whereas Cesar Chavez toiled as a migrant farm worker along men, women, and children who performed daily backbreaking labor for meager pay and in deplorable conditions, Cesar Chavez devoted his life to correcting these injustices and to remind us every job has dignity, every life has value, and every person should have the chance to get ahead. Si se puede, yes we can. And whereas Cesar Chavez, an American labor leader, co-founded the National Farm Workers' Association and also the UFW. Cesar Chavez became the best-known Latino-American civil rights activist and was strongly promoted by the American labor movement. Chavez led his demonstrations with nonviolence and was instrumental in defending and protecting the rights of farm workers. And whereas the American GI Forum of Saginaw, a veterans' organization, continues to celebrate and honor Cesar Chavez by foregoing his legacy, conviction, education, and principled leadership that serves as an inspiration for all Americans. Now, therefore, it be resolved, I, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members, do hereby recognize that March 31st, 2024, as Cesar Chavez Day in the city of Saginaw, and call upon all citizens of this community to reflect and honor the life of this distinguished leader, veteran, and American. It witnessed, therefore, I do here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this 18th of March in the year of our Lord, 2024.
Thank you. Do you want to come up and receive it? Come up and receive, and then please have words.
Thank you. City Manager Tim Morales, Madam Mayor Moore, Brenda Moore, City Council Members, Madam Clerk. My name is Miguel Guzman, a Vietnam-era veteran and the commander of the American GI Forum. I am here to express my gratitude for your unwavering support and recognition of the Cesar Chavez Luncheon Scholarship Program. Your dedication to this city and your roles is truly impressive, and the sacrifice you make to protect and improve the community do not go unnoticed. Madam Mayor Moore, it was a moment of great pride for all of us to see you receive a warm hug from President Biden. Thank you for representing the city of Saginaw, and it's such a great honor. I would like to take opportunity to thank everyone for supporting the 19th Annual Cesar Chavez Luncheon and Scholarship Program and your contribution to the proclamation of Cesar Chavez Day. The American GI Forum has not gone unnoticed, and we are incredibly grateful for it. Thank you for your support, and we invite you all to join us March 29th, 2024, at UAW Local 699 Bagley Hall from 11:30 to 2:30. Celebrate the occasion with us. Once again, thank you for your support, and we hope to see you all there, and remember, si se puede, yes we can.
I got my heart broken, girl, like you. You know what to say.
Yes, sir. I'll have some. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right, thank you. My brother. Appreciate you putting on game and bucks. I know that's right.
Thank you so much for being here.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for doing your man.
So much for being here.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for your service.
Not church today, but.
Don't worry about it all the time.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, George. Well, outside councilman. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, that takes us to public hearings. We have one on the agenda. It's regarding the proposed Michigan Department of Natural Resources Recreation Passport Grant Application.
The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address the council as a whole and for the council to hear the comments from the speakers regarding a specific action being requested. Speakers must limit themselves to the subject matter of the public hearing. Please state your name and say if you are in support or opposition of the public hearing. The main speaker or the designated representative should speak first. They are allowed 10 minutes. Every speaker thereafter is allowed three minutes. This is not a question or answer period, which is session. Therefore, questions must be directed, must not be directed to individual council members. Madam Clerk.
I believe we have our speaker. Do you want to call for comments? Call for comments.
I'm ready.
All right.
She's timing you.
Well, thank you. My name is Wayne Hoppen. I work for Wade Trim, and I'm working with the Public Services Department. I'm going to talk a little bit about the project and the grant we're talking about today. Before I start, I did want to acknowledge Phil Carwatt and Travis Herr, who are here today from the Public Services Department. We've been working with Public Services for just under a year, and we have 22, or $27 million in pending grant requests out right now. We are submitting $6 million, around $6 million, in earmark requests to the federal government this week, and we have about $2 million in other grants that we're working on currently right now. So, we've been very busy over the last year trying to identify some grant opportunities for the city and getting some projects that are competitive and pursue those opportunities. So, hopefully you'll see more of me in the future, so. But today, we're talking about the Michigan Recreation Passport Program. This is a grant that we're looking to use for development, Development Hoyt Park. The Recreation Passport Program is a state program. There's about $2 million per year available. The source for this program comes from Recreation Passport fees on your license plate. So, every year you have an opportunity to check a box and pay 14 bucks, and that money goes to the Recreation Passport Fund. So what we're doing is we're requesting a grant. We're requesting the maximum grant of $150,000 to support construction of a playground at Hoyt Park. That grant is due April 1st, so that's coming up. We're working on it right now. And those awards will not be made until around the end of the year for implementation in 2025. So this is a little schematic, if you want to look at the screen of Hoyt Park. We're talking about the northern end of the park on the drive that's closest to Washington. So you can see the ball fields. This will be to the west of the ball fields. I know this, this graphic is in a north, north, south orientation, left to right. The playground project itself would not be constructed until next year. The Friends of Hoyt Park are building a pavilion. They bid that out and will construct that this year as part of the Memorial Cup activities. So there, there will be a pavilion, as you can see on the right side of that graphic, that will be built this year. Next year, come back and build the playground should this grant move forward. The types of improvements that are envisioned there, and this is by the Friends of Hoyt Park, they've been a partner in this project to select the equipment they would put at the playground. We're looking at inclusive equipment, particularly a we-go-round, which you can actually fit a wheelchair in there. In the we-go-round, that's the picture on the top right. And the Friends of Hoyt Park are committing the full match. So this requires a 25% match of funds, and the Friends of Hoyt Park have committed to not only the $50,000 match, or yes, the $50,000 match, but also any balance of costs that would go over that $200,000. We put a lot of contingency in this grant request. We don't anticipate it going over $200,000, but that would be for the responsibility of Hoyt Park, the Friends of Hoyt Park, if that were to move forward. So that is the overview of the project. There is a resolution in your council packet later that you'll be considering. And been really great working with the city, and we look forward to finding future opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this public hearing? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this public hearing? No, this is on the subject that we've got a public hearing on the parks. Last and final time, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this subject? I need the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
That takes us to public input.
Speakers, I need you to speak clearly and remain, and to remain courtesy, 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 and also be respectful for the audience and the council. You have three minutes. The clerk will call you to the podium. You have three minutes. Please focus solely on the issue at hand. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Shah Ali. Our next speaker is Kristi Windorf.
Come on, ma'am, step up to the podium, please.
I'm here to request the elimination or reduction of the board-up fee that was assessed to my property. I'm Kristi Windorf. The basis for my request is based on the following facts and sequence of events. On March 16th, 2023, at approximately 8:15 a.m., I received a telephone call from the fire marshal asking me if I owned the property at 10:15 West Genesee Avenue. He explained to me that there was a fire at 4:00 a.m. and asked me if I had insurance, in which I answered yes. I informed the fire marshal that I would be on my way to secure the property. The fire marshal informed me that the property had already been secured and that he would meet me the next day. He indicated he did not want me to come up and go on the property. I went up with my property manager on the following, the following day and arrived at 1:00 p.m. and stayed in the car per the fire marshal's instructions until the fire and police K-9 unit arrived. We noticed that most of the windows and door fronts were boarded up. When they arrived, I was interviewed in my car regarding items like how many houses I owned and whether I had any previous fires. The fire marshal came and told me that they found no accelerants. We went inside to survey the damage, and there was a burned-up cricket rocker, smoke on the walls, and a busted bedroom window. A couple of days later, I received a work authorization form to sign giving Hammer permission to board up the property, which would be sent to my insurance company for work that had been done already. I was advised by another insurance agent not to file a claim and to not sign the form for work that had been done without my approval. Subsequently, we found out from Hammer that the house was not secured at 8:15 when the fire marshal called me and said it had been secured. According to Hammer, they received the call at 5:00 a.m., and they were told the inspector to board up two doors, seven windows, one basement entrance, and one crawl space entrance for 11 sheets, when only one window was busted for a total bill of $1,157.90. Hammer told me the job had been authorized by the city because they are under contract by the city and that no reduction would be given because they did exactly what the city had asked them to do. In summary, I never authorized securing my property, either verbally or by the authorization form. I was not allowed to secure my own property by my own property manager when I could have been there in like 30 minutes. The work is excessive since only one bedroom window was broken into. To board up 11 entry points is not warranted. I am requesting elimination or reduction in the assessment for $1,157.90 for work that was never authorized by me.
Thank you.
You'll get a response from City Hall. We don't answer.
Okay, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor, we are at remarks of council.
And we will start tonight, council members, remember you have three minutes as well. We will start the, the council talk with Councilwoman Garcia. I'm so sorry.
Good afternoon, concerned citizens of the community. It is Monday, Mayor Moore, so I'll give you that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the young students that are in attendance on this great student government day. Glad I've had lunch with you guys and the dog demonstration. So thank you for the speakers, thank you for Cesar Chavez Day, for them being here and recognizing that important day in history, especially for our Latino community. Just some things that are going on in the community. There's a food giveaway this Friday. Brady and Church of God, they do do where you can sign on online. That way you don't have to wait to get a ticket. That way you're secure a spot in line for the food giveaway. And of course, Old Town Outreach always has food giveaways on Saturdays, and it usually starts about 10 o'clock. So that's every Saturday. You might see people out in the community. They're out there doing that. This Sunday is a Cesar Chavez Day celebration at Saginaw Valley at 3:00. It is a free event, and there's going to be a documentary of American Portrait of a Street Revolution. So I plan on attending either that one or next Wednesday. This weekend is the 12th Annual Primos Ganda Awards, where I will be there paying homage to Mr. Ramon Mingo Rodriguez Sr. He passed away during COVID, and he's receiving an award with the family this Saturday, so it's exciting to be able to be there to receive that award with the family. And we also have a billboard coming up on South Washington and East Remington here in his memorial this week, so can't wait to see it from Lamar Building. They were a great company to work with. And then also there's a spring bazaar and Easter egg hunt this Saturday. It's a free event, and it starts at 2:00. For the kids to go out, and the Easter bunny will be there. And of course, I'll be doing my side hustle this year, doing the Easter bunny. Hopefully I don't have any claws, but I believe I have one tomorrow. I'm going to go see the veterans, so I'm excited to get my Easter bunny thing going. I went viral a couple of years during COVID where I fell, so, but it's okay. The show must go on, that's what we do. And just always East Side Soup Kitchen. Thank you Diane and them for attending. They're always looking for volunteers, so for you young ones that need high school credits or that, that's a great place to go and volunteer. It's very rewarding, and you'll see a lot there, and it's just really great to give back to the community and, you know. So they're always looking for volunteers, so make sure you go out there and just check it out. It's during probably lunchtime, but maybe in the summer you guys can come out there and volunteer. If you're always looking for community events, that's something that they're always willing to take people, and especially me, I go volunteer there a lot, so. Have a great rest of your day, and thank you guys for being in attendance with us. That's all.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Leona Local 1098 and the MAC are doing an Easter Bash on Friday, March 29th, from 5:00 until 8:00 over at the MAC. There's going to be Easter egg hunt, a family movie, big screen showing, and then vendors are going to be there to give out some delicious food. So if you have some time, when you have some time on Friday, March 29th, please go out to the MAC. In regards to Cesar Chavez Day, it's a great honor to be able to, to say that proclamation. I work in the labor movement, and things have not gotten easier since 1965. So the first thing that Mr. Chavez had ever done was a strike for grapes and lettuce for folks that were going on and being part of the migrant workforce that would put that products into the households of family members in the United States of America. They weren't paid well, they were treated badly, they were disciplined in ways that were close to egregious. And when that was all won, that was from 1965 until 1970, that whole strike was for five years. When they won, there were a bunch of people that said, "Well, you know, now that the grapes and lettuce have been taken care of and the strike is over, they're going to want something else." And then Cesar Chavez had said, "Yeah, we want more. Of course, we're not going to stop." You know, our goal is never for grapes and lettuce. It was for be able to have worker rights. So that's a big deal. So President Biden is the first person to ever walk the picket line with strikers from UAW. So that gives you a little bit of insight. So I've been away at Ann Arbor painstakingly for three weeks. The Michigan Medicine Group are finally going to get their union, there's 2,300 workers in that area. They should be counting the vote today with the National Labor Relations Board. That was a big deal. Outside of that, if anybody has any information for Kwan Lee, Quay Smithers, Mario Bulger, Pamela Whitson, Ryan Clemmons, Roy Whitson III, Cortez Hampton, Mazzy Reddison, Jonathan Lamar Van, Ronald Pacheco, Delance Stephens, please call 1-800. These are all people that were murdered in the last year and a half. Thank you. That's crime sorcerers, by the way.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you to our public comment, our public speakers this morning. Welcome to Government Day, and it's happy to have you. Please forgive me. I work at a university, so I wanted to get there with you guys, but I couldn't get out off campus today. So I know that our staff here, our chief, are treating you well, and you're having amazing time. I hope, I don't know if we will be able to get a report of how they did during their mock meeting today, but I would really love to hear about that, just to see that interest in what you all are doing. Eventually, one day, sitting in these same seats, sitting on our commission, the one thing I just want to share with you all today, and I know you'll hear it, is that it starts now. Your voice matters, your voice can be heard. And here in the city of Saginaw, we make space for people your age and your age group. And so I believe it's the age of 18. When you turn 18, you can join a commission here in the city of Saginaw. So necessarily, it doesn't have to be sitting here at city council, but you can also start as you get close to 18. There are seats available that you all will be able to fill to make a difference in your community. And if you're not sitting on a committee right now, join your student association, your student government, or finding an organization even within the community that you can serve your time and spend your time. And I'm going to put this little push out there, this summer, we will be having in the city of Saginaw, a six-week reading program called Freedom School. And so come back to another meeting, and I'll be able to have some information for you. And this Freedom School is just empowering our young people to have a joy for reading. We know the statistics, but it is your age group that we want to encourage. It is open to high schools. We want you all to be a part of that. And so my name is Councilman Copeland, and so you can find me if you have any questions. I love to sit down and talk with you all about Freedom School and how you all can even make a difference this summer by impacting the youth in the city of Saginaw. So as we get ready for Easter Sunday, Resurrection Sunday, let's get ready, do our hair, get our haircuts, make your haircut appointment now if you haven't already. I didn't, I made a different, I made the issue for Christmas. I didn't make the same mistake this time for Easter, so I'm ready. And thank you again for joining and being with us today. And let us, as we celebrate this resurrection holiday, think of all the goodness and the love and the great things that we have going on here in our community, and thank you again for being here. That is all, Mayor Moore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. Special greetings to our youth, our guests this afternoon. I'd like to thank everyone that came to your city council meeting today to watch, listen, hear your city council at work today. Probably going to try to make this real quick, I'd like to give kudos out to the coupon ambassador. She was on 107.1 this past weekend, and I just want to send kudos to her for all of the work that she does in the city of Saginaw. I also like to say I've had several phone calls and inquiries to where I was this past Thursday when President Biden was here. I didn't know President Biden would be here at that particular time. I was not invited, and I was not aware of any, any going on in regards to that. So I want you to know, had I known ahead of time, or had I been invited, I would have represented the citizens that elected me, and I would have been there had I had known of I was informed. had I had known of I was informed in regards, uh, to President Biden, uh, being where he was. Um, so, uh, a lot of things transpire because that's just how they transpire. So again, thank you so very much for being here and you all have a great rest of the day.
Thank you. Next we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, thank you to, uh, our public speaker that came out today. Um, thank you for our students being here today. Uh, I myself, when I was in high school, I was involved in student government and in college as well. Um, I think it's very important that you all be involved, uh, no matter what level you are at. Um, if you're not involved, educate yourself, make yourself very aware of policies, procedures and protocols. It, it can go a long way in your own life and also assisting others. Uh, with that being said, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next we have Councilman Ball.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to, uh, thank the students for coming out for Government Day today and, uh, to reiterate with you guys that I personally think that service is the rent that we pay to be here on God's earth. You know, and it's our right to have personal achievements, but service to your fellow human being is the thing to give life to, uh, God's creation. You know, so I'm going to thank you guys for coming out, learning about, uh, what the city, how it runs, uh, who's running it and all the different departments that's, uh, here in the city of Saginaw. So I would like to thank you guys again and say keep up the good work. I'm looking forward to, uh, reading about some of you guys later on in life. I'm going to put a big smile on my face, hey, I remember I'm at the city council meeting. So I'm looking forward to seeing you guys strive and do better for the city of Saginaw and for yourselves too. I really don't have a lot to say today. I just want to say that, uh, I think about it so much about what's going on in the city of Saginaw and, and how we can improve it. And I think the best way we can do that, we've got to get involved in other people's lives and see when making them tick and be the service of other people, you know? Um, I being a mentor myself, being in the Big Brothers and Sisters Program and, and how rewarding it is to see when other kids, when the light come on, when the kids say, hey, maybe I should do this, maybe I should do that. Uh, I keep thinking about the young guy next door to me who's, uh, causes mother some problems. And, um, he dropped out of school and I, I encouraged him to go to Michigan Youth Challenge Academy. And the guy ended up graduating before the class is over with, before his class graduated. So now he's graduated and now he's going to school to try the best to be a, a welder or a pipe fitter. You know, so there's a lot of careers and skilled trades. So, uh, if you guys know anybody that may need to go to a youth challenge academy, it's available here in, in, in Michigan. And I would advise everybody here to try to get involved in skilled trades if you don't want to go to college. There's some extremely rewarding careers and you make a lot of money in it too. Uh, the city needs, uh, people to do pipe fitting and, and cleaning the water and changing water lines and we need electricians and we need computer technicians and stuff like that to help our city run. So, um, I encourage you guys to get involved and thanks for being here.
Thank you. Next we have Mayor Proton Bench.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon to everyone. Um, I know that they've left us, but I do want to, um, thank the group from the American GI Forum for their service to our country and their continued service to the community, uh, through their, um, their scholarship program, which is such a perfect time for you guys to be here to hear about it. Um, but I want to welcome you guys and thank you guys for being here. Um, Student Government Day is a probably the one of more, one of the more fun council meetings that we get to participate in. But, um, as Councilman Ball said, that service is the rent that we pay to be here. And all of you have different talents that are unique to you as individuals. So you might not be public speakers or candidates, but you might be, um, artists and, you know, graphic designers and all of those things. And those are all talents that we need you guys to remember us when you go and go out into the world, that you come back to us and bring those talents back to, to Saginaw and don't forget about us. Um, but also if you are not registered to vote, please get registered to vote. Um, you can be added to the, um, absentee voter list. So if you're away at college, you can be mailed an application and you can be kept up to date on what election is coming. If it's a local one, you might not know about it, but they'll send you a letter and you'll get it in the mail and you can vote from wherever you are and then make sure that you come back home and stay involved. Um, because the most influential group of people, uh, participating in elections are the ones that refuse to vote and don't see a value in adding their voice to the collective voice. Um, and a lot of the time that's young people because they think that, you know, nobody's going to listen. But you guys are the ones who are going to deal with everything we leave behind. And hopefully we leave something better behind to you, but we have a much better guarantee, um, that our work is good work for you if you guys are a part of the conversation. Um, and to add to that, we have many boards and commissions that you can serve on once you're 18, but we do have an opening for a student on our Citizen Police Advisory Commission. So if any one of you are interested in serving in that capacity, our clerk is right there, Ms. Christine Bolzmann. You could talk to her or you can call her office and figure out how to go about applying for it. But I would please implore you guys to think about, um, filling that position because it's not really one that's necessarily easy for us to fill. So, um, I just want to thank you guys for being here and I hope you enjoyed your afternoon with us. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, me. Um, students, I had a ball, I had a ball. I truly hope that you come back. I've met some new friends, seen some old friends. And the good part about these young people was they did a mock interview and Councilman Copeland asked, and let me just tell you, they put us to shame. They put us to shame because they asked questions. They didn't come without a solution, they came and asked the questions. So many times we get caught up and we need not do that. This week was an exciting week for me. I got to hug the man, the president, okay? Was not Brenda Moore's doing. I was selected by his team. It was an honor and a privilege. I said it to the group this morning, you can be anything you want to be. Who would have ever thought a young girl who was a bail bondman and a bounty hunter would go from the jailhouse to City Hall? You couldn't have told me that. So I need you to understand, and I told them this morning, I'm going to say it again and I'm going to keep saying it. You got to like or love what you do and then you got to study it. We may not make all of the right decisions and we going to have some bumps and errors just like you guys do. But what I want you to do is never stop dreaming, never stop believing in yourself. Citizens, my, my public speaker, uh, she's gone. Uh, all of those answers will get answered. It's just a joy and a delight to look out and see young people. I need y'all to come back. Y'all here, come back, especially you two twins sitting on the end. And they are identical twins. So don't try it, y'all, they identical. They are, and they're just cute as a bunny. Madam Clerk, I am all done. Thank you all for coming, God bless.
That takes us to reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager, oh, I didn't talk about.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will, uh, thank all of the students who are participating in Student Government Day today. Um, it gives you an opportunity to see a lot of different facets of the city. And, um, we have information technology jobs, water, wastewater, firefighting, police officer, financial engineers, technicians. Um, so there's a lot of opportunities here. We're always looking for employees and we like, uh, people who are from the area to work for the city. And after a council meeting, if you want to talk to some of the council members, they'll be available. They all have, they can all talk to you about the, a service on the council or in other organizations, but they all have varying, uh, varying career paths as well that they can, uh, guide you on and give you some information on those as well. And who would have thought, so there's a lot of change in the city. You can start at Delta College and become a medical doctor and never leave the area. So that's something that's new here. You can start at Delta, go to SVSU and go to Central and graduate in the city. So a lot of opportunities here now. And I also want to thank Positive Results Downtown. They had their annual meeting and, uh, the, the amount of work that they do in Saginaw, uh, providing events is pretty phenomenal. So I want to thank them for what they are doing. We are continuing to work with Berry, Ontario on our Sister City Initiative. Uh, we had a meeting, uh, recently, so that is progressing forward and we're continuing discussions. We hope to get a group, uh, to come to Saginaw, hopefully during the Memorial Cup. And we will visit Berry as well to learn more about that and hopefully get that in place. It's a great opportunity for us because of the proximity. That's one of the things talked about, uh, for exchange and learning. Uh, it's much easier to get to, to Berry, Ontario than it is to get to our other sister cities. So we're hoping to move that forward. Uh, there's also a Planning 101 session at next week's City Planning Commission, March 26th. So it'll be discussion of the ordinance rewrite and scope, zoning ordinance audit overview, public participation and feedback and discussion, uh, question and answer. So everyone's invited to that. Hopefully, uh, some council members, uh, will be able to attend that. The Saginaw Fairgrounds building demolition is progressing. As of midday last Friday, the contractor was continuing demolition, demolition of the grandstand with about a third of the building left to go. So we're anticipating more, uh, work done and removal this week. It seems to be on time. So we've also approached the Saginaw Housing Commission about the fairgrounds gate. Uh, the one acre property has been separated from the rest of the fairgrounds. So we think that's a, a great opportunity for the city to work with the Neighborhood Association and the Saginaw County Historical Society, uh, to make that a gateway project for the neighborhood and the city, uh, and kind of a, a small park, pocket park. So hopefully we can move that project forward. And finally, um, the final phase of our ARPA-funded home rehabilitation program, uh, is starting. Applications, it's the, uh, the window program portion. Applications are being accepted on Saturday, April 6th, from nine AM to 3 PM here at City Hall and council chambers. So applicants must be city residents, be the owner and occupant of a single-family home for at least a year and must fall, uh, below the ARPA household income limits. So we have installed, I think, all of the furnaces that were applied for, that were qualified. We are still working on some of the boilers because that takes a little more work, uh, than the furnaces. We are still working on the roof program. Uh, that's limited due to weather, so, uh, we're fin, hopefully finish that up this year.
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll be working on the window program. So that concludes the management update.
Any questions? Do we have any questions for the city manager? Yes, Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the fairgrounds, is there, uh, the ability to get a request of information for, you know, where we're at currently? I know there was a brief update, but just, you know, any information from back and forth?
Yeah. Yeah, we can send you a timeline. Um, so they are supposed to be done, I think, mid-April.
Uh huh.
Uh, but we can provide you a more detailed timeline on, on that process.
Okay, great. And then also I, I like the motion to suspend the council rules for section three, where people, uh, are able to keep their hats on. I'm trying to get you guys to be okay. Okay, nevermind.
Let, let me say this. I have another set of twins in the back and I didn't want to ignore them. Another set of the twin brothers in the back. Don't sit back there like y'all don't know who I'm talking about. Y'all know exactly who I'm talking about, y'all identical too. Okay. I don't know what just happened, so I had to put some humor into that one. Yes, Councilwoman? Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, uh, city manager, you said the applicant, is the applications available April 6th or they can start turning them in April 6th?
They'll, they're available April 6th here at City Hall. So they'll come to City Hall that morning. I think it starts at nine. And you can come right here and the staff will help you fill it out and you turn it in right when you're here.
Okay, will they also be online on a city website?
It's the one, it's the same as our other programs. They'll, you just come right in and we'll hopefully get you all signed up that day.
Okay. And I have a question that few people have asked me. In regards to the, um, Memorial Cup, uh, small business law and the, um, fee of $75 to fill out that application, can that be waived at all?
No, no.
And they don't get it back if they don't get?
It's non-refundable.
It's non-refundable. Okay, so if they don't get the loan, they lose that $75 also?
Well, what we're trying to do is, um, we're trying to take it in two, two tranches. That's why we sent out all the applications and everything, um, earlier in March so that we would have it back before the end of March. So we're expected to meet with the SEDC Board on the 28th and then at their regular meeting. So we're going to work with any, any persons that come through with their application.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, I'm fine, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk.
Our next item is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on our city webpage and on HGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
Oh, no.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Do I have any exceptions?
Yes, number 20.
Number 20 is an exception. Do I have any more? Yes, ma'am.
Number four.
Number four. Do I have any more? Motion on the floor, all those in favor sitting in front by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number four is to approve the recommendations for the 2024 Single Lot Special Assessment Tax Rule. That was Councilmember Sylvia.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, some of it is just for clarity, um, and it's just a couple of, um, the properties. And, um, the, uh, first one would be actually the first property at 1015 West Genesee. And, um, did have some information in regards to that, but I would, would like to know, is that going to be looked into? Is there anything that can be done with that? Because we did hear from the young lady, uh, in regards to the one window that only needed boarding up? From her opinion?
Yeah, yeah, so that, any action is taken by council at this point. So we, uh, I talked with her and, uh, so did Cassie, who's over the department in inspections. Is the one who orders the boards up, board up. So we both spoke with her and went through the process and she understands the process, uh, in my view. Um, she just, uh, disagrees with the amount of, of board up. Um, I did advise her that, uh, it would have been something we could have dealt with a year ago. That's when the incident occurred. If it had been brought to our attention, it was March 23. So this is an event that happened about a year ago. That's why it's on the special, uh, Single Lot Assessment. So this is when it's, rolls over to the tax. So it's difficult at this point for, uh, me or the staff to go out and assess if it was something that could be done, that it's been paid by the city. But it is up to, uh, council to, uh, do something with it at this point if you, if you don't think the charge should be there.
So is there any oversight, uh, from the city in regards to the work that Hammer does?
Yeah, there, when they come out, it's typically, um, if there is, uh, break in unoccupied or if there's a fire. So when they're called out, it's usually called out by the fire marshal and, or inspections. Um, I, I believe that the staff, um, did agree with the level of board up because the house was unoccupied and had been, um, broken into before as well.
So this was an unoccupied?
Yes.
And the next one would be the property, which would be the second one if it was numbered. 114 Moten, I believe that's Moten Drive, but, uh, what I wanted to know is that, uh, the fee of $75. Um, I understand from reading, uh, the information is that, um, this young person had, uh, the alarms, uh, had the alarms reset on their own. So would that have made a difference in, in, um, this fee? When the alarms went off because, uh...
No, the actual fee is for the permit registration.
So that would be there anyway?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. One, two, three, four. Number five, I believe this will be five, 907 North Bond. When, okay, they claim that the amount is too high and would like it lowered to fair market value. I'd like to know, do we know what the fair market value is?
I'm not familiar with that particular one.
Phil back there? No, we're looking for the department head. Did Phil leave? Oh, he's right here. Where's the man in the back? Is it Phil?
Phil, you blend in with the decor today.
Sorry, Phil.
You build it, he, you know that sad when you look to see it to here.
Yeah, what's, is it for a sidewalk?
Yard violation.
Oh, so it's for a grass cutting violation? Yeah, what we do is we?
Actually, I'm sorry, actually, on here, unless I misread, they didn't say that.
It's the code.
Okay, the code, so they would know better, but okay.
Yes, it's for grass.
Yeah, so I just have CC4. I don't have all the backup information, but what I can tell you is we do put together very detailed information related to what our costs are to go out and cut somebody's property for them. And all we bill is what our true expenses for labor, indirect costs, equipment costs, fuel costs into that. So I don't have that hourly fee right in front of me, but we basically just, we go out, we take pictures to prove that it was a violation and the grass was an excess of nine inches and, you know, with the property right behind it so we can show it, and then we track all our costs to it. And then, you know, we get back every month, we send the invoices out, and if they're not paid, they just go on to the assessment, but?
So do you use the fair market value?
We use our?
In addition to?
We use what our actual true costs are. We don't use, we don't look at what a fair market value is. I mean, we just look at what it costs us to go out and cut that property. So?
Okay, and also, it would be the property at 2815 Mackinac also? Because this speaks of the fair market value. You explain, but can someone explain me what actually happened here?
Same thing.
With this code?
I don't, I don't have?
It's another yard violation.
Yeah, it's just, if their yard was not cut and they had weeds or grass growing in violation of the nine inches, what we do is, you know, if we get a complaint or something on it, we'll come out, take a look, and if it needs to be cut, we'll cut it and then we'll assess that bill to the owner.
Okay, and it seems like that's Mid-Michigan Housing, so they must have, I won't say, they must have violations quite often, maybe?
I'm not sure. I don't have a list of how many we cut.
Okay.
Which we don't want to cut, so we, you know, we can't barely cut our own grass, let them go out and cut individuals' grass, so, you know. But then, you know, that ordinance got changed. We don't have the ability with the amount of violations to hang a door knock or anything. So the way we notify now is we have to put out a press release and a public notice before April 1 of every year. We've already, I think, sent that notice out for this year to advise property owners and that. It is a lot, I believe you can get a cut a lot less than what we charge, but a lot of private individuals and entities don't have the type of an amount of fees that we have to tie to our cutting.
Okay, and my last one is this, because I kind of didn't understand it, because it says, the exemption does apply, but it still says that there is a fee due of $75, and that would be at the 233 North Roosevelt.
No, the exemption applies for that one. So the recommendation is that it should be removed from the tax rule. It's just telling you what the amount is that's going to be removed from the rule.
Okay, that one's going to automatically be removed. Okay, thank you so very much.
Anything else?
Oh, good, thank you. Beg your pardon?
So I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion to approve Council Communication 4.
I need a second. I got a second, Wayne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number 20 is to approve to increase the professional engineering services agreements with specific vendors by $300,000 for a new annual amount, not to exceed $2 million for fiscal year 2024, for services for the Public Services Department Engineering Division. That was Councilmember Balls.
Yeah, my question is, where did we find $300,000 to put into that fund? And did they spend all the money they had last year?
Yeah, so my answer to you would be yes, and we find it within other individual departments, depending on where that work's going to happen. And a majority of these projects are non-general fund. So what they are is if you have a bridge project or, you know, we have the elevated tower going on for 15 million from a grant. So a majority of the monies are budgeted within either the streets monies, the water and wastewater funds, rubbish fund, or? And this is a process that we've been doing for 20-some-plus years, and it's like a five-year agreement. But what's happening this year with all the additional funding that's coming through, you heard Wayne talk earlier about grants that we're receiving. Well, we're receiving grants, well, in order to do the projects, we have to do the professional services to get the construction plans and that stuff put together. So hence the need to increase. This thing got approved back in 2019 for like 1.5 million. In 2020, because we were expending all that money on infrastructure projects going on, we did a request to increase it to 1.7, but we're at that right now. In order to get us through the remainder of the year, we need an additional 300, because we're at about almost 1.7 right now with professional services currently. Thank you. You're welcome.
Well, that's something good to hear that we got so many projects going on in the city of Saginaw.
There are.
I mean, when I first come here, they was complaining about the roads. Now they complaining because we fixing too many. I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve number 20.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at Boards, Commission, and Committee Reports.
Do I have any reports from any council persons on any boards or commissions? Madam Clerk.
Next item is Appointment of Board, Commission, and Committee Members.
I need a motion to approve Items 1 through 5, leaving room for exceptions.
So move. Second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Is there any exceptions? You none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
It says to resolution, so the first one on the agenda is certifying the 2024 Single Lot Special Assessment Tax Rule.
I need a motion to adopt.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Our next resolution is establishing a study committee to research the creation of the East Saginaw Historic Business District.
I need a motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to know what this committee is going to be actually doing.
Okay, is it somebody here from the historical? I'm sorry, Ms. Cassie. I don't know what I'm thinking, I'm looking dead at you.
Amy and I can give you about as much information as we can about this. So essentially, what the Historic District Commission is requesting with this study is to look at, you can see it's outlined in the map, included in the council communication, everything that's in light blue. Essentially, it's from Johnson until Johnson Avenue, a little bit past Genesee in downtown. So it's going to include both sides of Washington Avenue around Morley Park. So it has the Temple Theater, those buildings across the street. We still have like a full compact block there. And then it's the Bancroft and Eddie and all of the buildings on the corner of East Genesee and Washington Avenue, like the Lovely Nails Buildings, all of that area. So what the Historic District Commission is going to do with this resolution, if approved, is study all of the buildings within that area to determine their historical significance, and then come back to this council with a full report to establish it as a local historic district for the city of Saginaw. That would mean then that any project, any change for any buildings in that district would now have to come for approval to the Historic District Commission.
And is it, is it just that, that particular area that you just described?
Yep, so?
So you're not going any further?
It's outlined on that map, so that would be a new historic district. We currently have two. It's North Michigan Avenue, so somewhat of the business corridor, but really leading down kind of to Old Town. We also have Old Town Saginaw, which is a historic district. And then, I apologize, we have three. We also have a residential one, which is the Heritage Square Neighborhood. So currently, those are the three districts that the Historic District Commission approves any kind of exterior changes to the building. And then this one would be added, so they would then have four.
Councilmember Copeland.
Yes, thank you, Cassie, for that, because I did see the picture. And the only thing for me was that it just seemed small. And the one thing I was thinking about is the project that we have stars. We know the impact of 675 going through that actual historic district, the historic business district, and how 675 impacted them and where we are with the train station. I was just kind of thinking, for a historic business district, that just seemed a little small to me. And I was even looking at Genesee and how far they went down Genesee. I would just possibly, if they could come share some additional things with us, and that's just me thinking of just stories, history, conversations.
Well, and I think this designation is based on, so if you look at like the Federal Register and our master plan, it has things broken down into districts. And so this mirrors what's established at the state and federal level as a potential historical area, and they're taking it kind of one piece at a time. There are currently study committees, I think Potter Street's done?
Um, I think that that's still active.
The Barringer Building is currently under study. The Rec Key Houses are currently under study. And South Elementary is currently under study as well.
So we will see more of these coming to us?
These do take some time, so, yes.
So all of those that Amy just mentioned are already under study. They have been under study for the last, some of them have been a few years. A couple, I think two of them were just adopted last year. So they already went through the resolution process that we're going through right now. Once they do gather all of the information, then they come back for, again, approval to actually establish that as a historic district. And yeah, Amy's correct, there is another one on East Genesee that kind of covers a lot of East Genesee and then goes in the neighborhoods. It's like a national designation, but it's not a local one, so our local historic district don't have control over it.
And so how would we, and I may be going too far, how do we then look at that particular district to see any improvements? Because I'm thinking right now with Memorial Cup, East Genesee is an area that we do need to make sure it's clean because we have residents that are coming in. And I don't want to see things just being, happening in that district the same way like historic district, they have to go through them. As of now, I don't want it to be seen, that particular district, because it's a national designation, we may see, we don't, we may not have a stronger voice. So Amy, I appreciate the clarification you just brought me, and I do see that small area, I have the understanding there. And so possibly, I know we wait until we get the final report, but because, I'm going to be honest, until you said it, I've just remembered that we did approve that about a year ago. Some type of update, just to say, hey, just checking in, let you know, we are moving forward. There are some great things coming out. Just as council, when this comes before us again, we at least have some additional updates to utilize. So I appreciate you, Cassie, and I appreciate you, Amy, for that.
And I just want to clarify a little more. It doesn't, creating a historic designation doesn't necessarily bring development?
Absolutely.
Okay, it's adding an additional approval process?
Yeah, it's the additional approval, and that's what I'm saying. I don't want it to be where, because our local historic district does not have a say in that, that things can be approved easier without the voice of our historic district speaking up, speaking to, and giving life to what's going on.
It does still have to go, all projects go through the planning and?
Yep.
Planning, commission, sometimes the Board of Appeals, the zoning, and then obviously, city staff. But, yeah. Was there?
Councilwoman Bench, did you have a question?
Yes, I did.
Councilwoman Bench.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did, Cassie answered it. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Part of my question, Councilman Copeland had spoken, but what I would like to know, is there anything in the future, near future, for more districts or areas on the east side for historical?
Mm-hmm, and this one is on the east side. It's downtown, and then they?
A little bit further than downtown, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, well, so they really could study anything to make it a historic district. So from the Historic District Commission, from our meetings and things, they would like to designate a lot more areas, like this East Genesee corridor. So the main, the main areas that do exist is there's the Grove, which is, and these are national, Saginaw has a ton of them, but the Grove, which is like the north Washington, or South Washington corridor with all of the mansions that are still up there, like the Lumber Baron Mansions, that could be an opportunity, or East Genesee, which goes into the Cathedral District a little bit. I know the Cathedral District has been up as potentially being a historic neighborhood. So I definitely, I can run, I can tell them also that you guys would like an update from the study committees.
Thank you so much. When's the next time they meet?
The fourth Thursday of the month. So they haven't met yet this month.
Thank you so much.
I, let me say this. I'm really not comfortable with this, because it's locking up land. And if we're talking about improving our city, we can't keep saying everything is historical. And the studies, from what I just heard Ms. Zimmerman say, the studies have been going on for some years, and nothing has really happened. So that means, when you say a historic district, you can't go in and update it. It has to go back to its original form. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, it can be updated, but?
It can be updated.
Yeah, to meet the same, it can, basically, items can be replaced or restored the way that they would have been for their historical significance.
I can speak for me, I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with that. I would rather table this until they come in front of us and tell us what the plans are. Okay, at some point, there's got to be some plans. Other than steady saying, we want this to be a historic district, we want this. We went through this with the Lee Mansion. We went back and forth. Councilman Balls, Councilman Mayor Proten Bench, you were here. And we went back and forth. I would love to see them come in front of us, do a presentation to explain to us why they want to do all of these studies and what is going to be the end result. That's just me. Yes.
I guess, in regards to the timing of this, along with the Memorial Cup, this is essentially a two-year temporary moratorium on demolition, because we can't demo anything, people who own things, they have to get special approval. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I understand.
Well, so establishing a study committee effectively puts that property kind of in the same category as anything within a local historic district. So if they want to demolish a structure or make any exterior changes, whether it's in an established district or one that's under study as a proposed district, that would then go before the Historic District Commission for decision.
Okay. What impact is this going to have on our ability? Since we have these events and we have movement on our medical development here in the next two years, what kind of impact is that going to have on? And I guess with the timing of this, we have the Land Bank, they just received, I believe, a $2 million grant, which can help them clean up what's in their inventory. And I just want to know, I guess, they're our partner, our municipal partner in that sense. What impact is this going to have on our ability to make sure that our city looks its best once the Memorial Cup arrives and once we move forward with our developments?
I don't think it's going to have any impact on the Memorial Cup, because that's too soon, so they'll just be in study still for bigger development in the future. I mean, this is some of our very, our priority sites. It's going to have the Huntington Bank Building. It's going to have the Lovely Nails Corner of Genesee and Washington. And then a lot of the buildings across from Morley Plaza, you know, are, are, some of them are fully developed, some of them still need to be developed and upgraded and things like the Brewer Arcade. There's also, you know, some different facial work that could be done on those buildings. I mean, it's not necessarily a bad thing that this historic district would then make so that it's even more required that they would have to keep it that way. However, also, our zoning ordinance for the riverfront area is already form-based, so it does dictate that buildings have to be built to meet the characteristics of the surrounding area. And especially in downtown, it's going to be, you know, built up to the street, three stories tall, it's going to have to have the different elements to make it look like it fits into our downtown. it fits into our downtown. Um, so they, they kind of go hand in hand, this, it just adds one more level of approvals. So it could hurt, it could not, I mean, it, it opens up a little bit of avenue for incentives. However, with the nature of a building being historic, there, there are incentives around it being historic, whether it's locally designated or not, but there can be benefits for either way. So, it's hard to tell the future, but it would tie up a couple of our big priority sites. That's kind of the biggest issue, I guess, but it could be a positive, I mean, how you guys see it.
Go ahead.
Is there any, anything pending for demolition within this district that would be put on hold with the passage of this?
Uh, no demolition permits right now, I don't believe.
And, and if there were, an application for demolition already? That would kind of pull it out of the category of falling under this if it was, it was already approved.
Oh, okay.
Yes, Councilwoman.
I'm kind of between two right now, but, um, is it possible to have a, a report by our next council meeting?
I mean, we can make that request to the HDC, that, that's
I don't know what all's planned for the next council meeting, but probably.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know, how quick could they get back and give us some information? Thank you.
You know, I like that thought, and even if, not the next one, two weeks later?
Yeah.
Um, because then there'll be the met, that they will know. I mean, I don't want to make a snap decision, and it may stand in the way of something that we, that we got a chance to do. Okay, I'm looking beyond the Memorial Cup. I'm not looking just at the Memorial Cup. When they leave here June the third, I want Saginaw to look just as good as it looked from May twenty-fourth to June the third. So, all I'm asking for is for this group to come before us with a presentation, and tell us what the plans are, and why is it so important, I call it land lock, land locking land that we can develop on, and there's really nothing in their forecast that they want to do. Now, I, I can't speak for the whole council, so, yes, Councilman Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to motion to postpone Resolution Number Two until the HDC is able to present in front of council.
There's a motion on the floor, can I get a second?
A second, Matt.
Any more discussion about that?
I just
Yes.
I did want to say something really quickly. Uh, the City of Saginaw has a, a lack of inventory of historical sites, and I think this is a very important issue, that we should get a full, um, debriefing on from the HDC before we move forward, so that's why I made the motion. That's it.
There's a motion on the floor, any more discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Thank you all.
I'll share that with them at their next
Thank you so much. Thank you, my council members. Okay, now we've taken out one, so instead of it being five, it is now four.
So our third one is adopting the 2022 Saginaw County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Our next resolution is authorizing the city manager as the designated signatory for the Cass Street Historic Preservation Easement.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, any questions? That wasn't a question, that was a comment. Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Our next resolution is authorizing the submission of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Recreation Passport Grant Application for the Hoyt Park Playscape Construction.
I need a motion to adopt. He said so moved, but I got to say it, he can't just say it first. It's been moved, did I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Our final resolution is authorizing to seek fiscal year 2027 local bridge program funds for the Michigan Department of Transportation.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Here ain't no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
That takes us to miscellaneous business.
Do we have any motions that we need to put on the floor? Do we have any motions? Yes, Councilwoman Copeland?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a motion to not to exceed the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars and to allocate not to exceed the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars to Hidden Harvest for eligible capital expenses out of the food, two million dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and second, any discussion, council persons?
That's to adopt the resolution, correct?
Yes. Did I miss something?
Oh, I didn't say to adopt the resolution. Yep. Yes, we're good.
I'm totally lost.
Oh, no, we're good, we're good.
Okay. It's a motion on the floor, it's been moved and second. Yes, sir.
Um, I just want to, um, I believe, I just want to share out, we, last week, we have already allocated a hundred thousand dollars to, um, the Hidden Harvest Project. This nine hundred million would actually total that whole project million? I meant nine hundred thousand. Nine hundred million, that's what we doing. Speaking of that, Saginaw got that kind of money.
Don't start your mind. We got your nine hundred million.
Nine hundred million, what y'all looking at me for? Nine hundred thousand, um, but no, I like that. We got, we got that money.
Man, that sounds real good.
Nine hundred thousand, uh, to the same organization, which will be a total of one million dollars to go towards their, uh, capital program, uh, that will actually impact, uh, the East Side Soup Kitchen and Hidden Harvest, and I think for myself and Count Mayor Pro Tem, our whole focus with our two million dollars is we wanted to invest in the future and also in our organizations that have sustained our community. So as a total, we have, we would have allocated one million to the Food Club, a total of a hundred million, I mean, one mil- I'm about to mess up again, a hundred million, no, no. Uh, one million dollars for the Hidden Harvest, so that way we are invested in the future, supporting our sustainable organizations here. Um, so I would greatly support the, uh, our council support for this motion.
Next time I go to Washington, I'm gonna take you, because I'd like to come up with some numbers, then nobody know. Yes, sir.
So that, that's part of y'all budget in that particular bucket?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a correction, because you said the East Side Soup Kitchen, but shouldn't it, it states that it's the Hunger
Yes.
The Hunger Solution Center. So we got to make sure it says that, because you dividing the two.
Hidden Harv is the fiduciary, so we're allocating it to the fiduciary, and that's why I made that one. But they are all under this whole project. It's the Hunger Solution Project.
One big project.
But Hidden Harv is the fiduciary.
Thank you.
Everybody trying to be so technical today. Councilman Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the, the original request was five million dollars, and then this would be about twenty percent of that. Would this amount help with, um, other federal grants or, um, requests moving forward? So it feel, it feels like it's a bit unfulfilled, correct? But at the same time, it is a step forward for the total amount that you all have. So if anybody can answer that question?
I'm gonna answer it.
Yep.
I need you to get with them afterwards.
Are they able to
Because, no, they're not. We're in a meeting. And so, because we're in a meeting, no disrespect, we don't talk back and forth to the audience, we don't do it in public comment, we don't do it in hearings, and so I'm saying, I believe that the, that the Hunger Solution Program is happy, is happy with what they're getting. So I'm not trying to be funny, Councilman Flores, but we don't do that back and forth with the audience, we just don't do that.
And just to, just to answer, we have, um, Mayor Pro Tem and I, we have been in conversation prior to to understand the need, and that's where we wanted to make it towards capital expense, because with their total goal, at least with ours, they can actually purchase now equipment that will impact the day-to-day of right now. So even as they continue to grow, as they continue to fundraise what we allocate right now, they can actually use it right now to impact, get equipment to help them in the system now.
Thank you.
So did that help? I wasn't trying to be mean with you. Did that help? Because y'all see, they're back there grinning. They're back there grinning. They, I mean, they head is so big right now. If they head, they got the big head, it's gonna take, they gonna have to go to the side to get off the job, okay?
Point of information, I'm grinning with them. All set.
Anybody, anybody else with any comment?
No, I just want to, no, I don't, I just want to make, I'm, I'm happy to see that we're helping out like that, but hopefully, I hope this council will support later that we can get some jobs, so we can have less people going there and their resources will last long.
Okay, who, yes.
I just wanted to add, and I, I agree with you, but I just, I wanted to add that when we did the survey, um, the number one priority was a grocery store, and the closest thing that we have to the development of grocery store right now is the Food Club. Um, but the second highest priority, um, for people who were in the lower income bracket, their second priority was a grocery store. Their number one priority was making sure that the food giveaways, the East Side Soup Kitchens, the churches, the people who are actually feeding people who can't afford it, um, you know, get that, that support that they need. And that means that there is a group of people in the City of Saginaw that realizes, even if you put Kroger across the street from their house, they're not going to be able to utilize it the way my family can, the way, you know, a SNAP recipient might be able to. So those results just reveal that there's, there's a group of folks who think, no matter what, given their circumstances, and these are senior citizens probably, who can't increase their fixed income, um, you know, and, and haven't been able to keep up with inflation. But there's like a group of people in the City of Saginaw that have just kind of accepted and resigned to the fact that affordable groceries aren't necessarily attainable to feed the family for a week, um, that they need these supplemental meals. And, um, the East Side Soup Kitchen is just such a wonderful organization that I feel really good about, um, giving them this money, and I think that we've tried really hard to be in keeping with the motions that we've made, um, that are in the spirit of what, what the, the citizens said that they wanted. So I'm very glad that we had this opportunity to deliberate over these dollars, and I'm just, yeah, happy. So that's all I have.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make a comment. Like I said, I frequently go down to the East Side Soup Kitchen, and I know the team's doing great work. They got a heck of a marketer down there, and he's really pushing, and I know they're fundraising like crazy. This expansion is very well needed, and I appreciate my colleagues for, um, giving more money, because I know the need is there. Like I said, I go there on a regular basis. I see it, they're feeding over seven hundred to eight hundred people a day, and that's just at lunchtime. So, I mean, there's a drive-through service, which is great, so the expansion is very needed, and I, I'm glad that we're going to have this going forward, so we can see what we did in the future with these ARPA dollars, that they were put to good use, and people saying, oh, they were just spending on buying this. No, we're going to actually have something that we can look at down the road and say, I had part of being with that East Side Soup Kitchen Hunger Solution, so that's all I got to say, and I'm glad that we were able to allocate more money to you guys.
That's all, staying in line with, it's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing has already come your way. Call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Do we have any more motions on the floor? Yes.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to allocate in a not-to-exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars to the Saginaw Transit Authority and Regional Services for eligible capital expenses for bus shel- their bus, bus shelter project. Um, the funding, uh, will be identified, well, that's the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you. Um, and this is just for information, because from my understanding, we were dealing with nonprofits, this is a nonprofit and a for-profit entity?
Starz is a public agency.
I just, I asked, is it a nonprofit and a for-profit?
It's a public entity. It's neither.
Okay, so I read somewhere that it was a, a nonprofit. So that's why I'm asking, because that's what I read in my information.
It's a governmental authority, created under certain statutes.
So in other words, it's eligible.
Well, I mean, it's a not-for-profit, but it's correct. I mean, I mean, it's not a not-for-profit corporation, it's a public entity, and therefore does not collect profits.
It does not collect profits?
Hold on, Andy.
I'm, I'm saying, it does not collect profits?
It doesn't seek profits. It's, it's not trying to make money.
Yeah, because I know it's a, a good thing, but I'm just saying, because I, I, I get a little confused when, uh, some things are for-profit and nonprofit, or nonprofit, they can't get it, but they can get it, so that, that was why I was going with that.
It is not a for-profit entity.
So are the services free?
Well, the city is not a for-profit entity, and it charges for services.
I'm not comparing the city to that, I just asked a question.
That's the best comparison, because
I mean, I'm not talking to the city attorney, I just want, if she's going to explain it, you know, letting her know I don't understand it. So that's who I'm speaking with right now, who I'm having dialogue with, so, okay.
Where, where the funds, Ms. coming from?
Out of their two million a year. Maybe they had a part for the food co-op. I'm sorry, I might as well finish.
I'm talking about for the, for the, uh
It is coming out of their pot with the food, because
Bucket of money.
That, that bucket that they had, we've already approved that.
It's coming from the food insecurity.
That was my next question, but thank you. That was my next question, but thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, sorry. So with this allocation, it's a hundred thousand dollars, that would be, I think, eight points five percent of the total request for capital. This is seemingly a drop in the bucket. I know that it's a step forward, same as the food insecurity with the East Side Soup Kitchen. Is this just kind of, um, in terms of the intent to help them get additional funds moving forward with other agencies? To look, it would be better on the application that there was buy-in.
Let me ask this question. Are you still on the Hunger Solution? Or are we, because we're talking about Saginaw Transit?
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Okay. Well, I need you to rephrase it, because did you?
So, so the, the total
All these questions.
So the total, so the total request for capital is a hundred thousand dollars. The original request for capital is one million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. On top of the original request for funds is four point three million dollars. So depending on how you look at that, it's either two percent or eight point five percent of the total requests from the applications. I know that this will help moving forward with bus pads and with shelters. This is not all the money that you originally asked for, but this will help with other applications that you would, uh, give from other streams of revenue. That's the question I asked.
Okay, I, I understand it now.
Okay.
I understand it. I understand it, and to make a long story short, we gave them money so that we can at least say we did our part. Okay, we don't have a whole lot of money left, okay? In the ARPA dollars, let's be honest, we've got training and we got y'all stuff that, that you and Mr. Ball, Councilman Balls have to work on. Yes, yes, Mayor Pro Tem?
So the reason for making this motion is twofold. Uh, number one, we, um, the motion is specifically for bus shelters at Starz, or, excuse me, at, um, the East Side Soup Kitchen, um, to go along with their expansion, because they have been requesting one, and we haven't been able to make one work. Um, the other locations are for our low-income high-rises, or low-income apartments, and our senior high-rises. Um, the reason why we chose to go with Starz, um, was because they have an opportunity. One of the things that we had deliberated over was, um, grocery buses are a huge necessity, and that was something and that was something that was evidenced to us during the study, and the food survey, was that transportation is a huge barrier. Um, unfortunately, a grocery bus is at least $500,000, and with us only having a million dollars left, that would have been the whole million dollars, it wouldn't have covered repairs or the staffing for Stars to do that. So, when we learned that Stars has an opportunity to apply for a grant that would give them all of those things over a certain period of time, uh, we thought that the best thing we could do would be to provide shelters to the people who would then be using those services ideally, once they get those buses, because we're getting that grant. Um, and two, you know, letters of support are always wonderful, always welcome, but nothing talks like putting your money where your mouth is. So, we wanted to make these dollars have the biggest impact we can, because we recognize closer to the end of these deadlines that we have, the, the, more likely we aren't going to be able to fulfill a person's entire request. So Councilman Copeland focused, and I focused on, uh, food-related things that meshed with people's priorities and what they told us our priorities were, and we see this as a great opportunity to help maximize this opportunity and for Stars. Um, because I don't think Stars has this rosy of a outlook all the time, that we may assume there isn't money raining down from the ceiling, um, for, for public transportation, the way that, uh, that we'd like, that we, we need. So, we need to fill in where we can, and this is a great opportunity, I think, to do that, so.
I'm calling for the vote. I can do that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Congratulations. Did somebody say nay?
Yeah.
Did somebody say nay?
Nay, nay.
Come on, let's get it, just get it over with.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams is absent, Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bench?
Yes.
Councilmember Oystash is absent, Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
And Mayor Moore?
Yes.
You have six yes and one no, motion carries.
Congratulations. So, Madam Clerk?
That's your pleasure.
I need a motion, do not move.
I like the
Ask if there's any other motions, man. Are there any other motions?
Do we, I, I was gonna say that.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
No. Is there any more motions on the floor, all jokes aside, y'all, all jokes aside? Do we have any more motions? Here ain't no, I need a motion to, to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.